That's pretty close. All right. Article 40, we have a bylaw proposal for what's called nuisance house. Funny name. Would you just state your names for the folks in the room?
I'm Sally Linowski.
And I'm Mike Kent with the town police.
And Sally, you're from UMass?
I'm from UMass. I'm co-chair of the Camps Community Coalition to Reduce High-Risk Drinking.
Thank you. And your coalition has come up with a proposed bylaw to hopefully be helpful in dealing with the loud parties that go on in our town?
Yes, we did. I'm part of the coalition also. And kind of a diverse group of us started meeting probably over a year and a half ago. And it consisted of a local landlord, a select board member, a UMass School of Health representative, a town manager from Hadley, myself. I think I covered everyone. And what we decided to do was, we wondered if there could be something out there that we could use as a tool to assist in dealing with what we deal with in this town. Loud parties, large loud parties. And Steve Walzak, the landlord representative, was actually one of the ones behind it as far as pushing us forward. So we formed a committee. And we all decided that, and I am not one to say we need more laws, so we decided if we could not come up with a bylaw that would be useful, then we would table it. We weren't just going to put one together for the sake of putting it together. So after a lot of research on the committee's part, I think we put together a good bylaw that I think can be a useful tool along with the other bylaws we have. And I'll just go over some of the points to it that I think are important. I think the thing you have to keep in mind in looking at this bylaw is reasonableness. And I think everything in here is extremely reasonable when you take a step back and looking at it, what we're expecting of the people it's going to involve. If you look at the definitions, for instance, the definition of public nuisance, I highlighted creates a substantial disturbance in a quiet environment in a private or public property. And I went down and highlighted obstruction of public streets by crowds or vehicles, illegal parking, public drunkenness, public urination, the service of alcohol to underage persons, fights, disturbances of peace, and litter. All things that obviously reasonable people do not want in their neighborhoods. We're not pinpointing things that are hot-button items, I don't think. It's pretty common sense. And then moving ahead to, and feel free to jump in here, Sally, if you haven't, moving ahead to Section 2, consumption of alcohol by underage persons. Pretty much self-explanatory. And it indicates the times when it could be permissible. But obviously, the mass general law also involves that. But this is just another tool we can use in a civil infraction. Moving ahead to Section 3, hosting permitting or allowing a public nuisance. Again, if you think of reasonableness, I highlighted all reasonable steps to prevent the consumption of alcoholic beverage by underage person at a gathering by controlling access, controlling quantity, verifying age. I think that's all extremely common sense. I think anyone hosting a party, even if they're not doing it, no, they probably shouldn't be doing it. Even a freshman in college probably knows that he shouldn't have alcohol because he's underage. So that is the first segment of this bylaw, which is the social host part. And then if you skip ahead, there's also, actually, I'm moving a little too fast here, so excuse me. I also highlighted another thing, common sense. The person in control of premises to knowingly host, permit, or allow the gathering to take place at said premises where at least one underage person consumes alcohol. So again, if you're hosting a party, you should be doing the things to make sure that underage people are not in there. The second tool for this bylaw is response, response costs. And if you look at Section 5, person liable for first and second response of a gathering of a public place, that is that we can assess response costs to these people. That would be the third, actually, the third prong of this also. And I don't necessarily see this on every party, but if you have a major issue that pops up, as we did for several years with Hobart Lane, knock on wood, hasn't popped up the last couple, that's a substantial sum of money that's spent. And if you can connect the dots back to where the party started, perhaps recovering some response costs through the police service, fire, EMS that's used for something like that. The third prong of this is to bring in the landlords. And again, I think this is very, very reasonable. We had a landlord on the Steve Walzak on our committee who kept his group in town updated via emails. On the third offense, if a landlord who will be informed in writing of the first two offenses to his tenants to the house he owns, if he has not started an eviction process, then he too can be held liable if we go back for a third offense. And I would think, and 99% of our landlords in this town are very good, very conscious, I would think if we're issuing tickets to these houses on two separate occasions, that they're going to want to start the eviction process. Once they start the eviction process, then it's in the hands of the housing court. And the wheels of justice turn slowly. We can't really hold that against them because things go slow. This bylaw is also a civil infraction. In other words, the officer would get there, they would write a ticket for a fine, preferably, we're hoping a $300 fine. And so you're getting immediate impact, hitting them in the wallet immediately. So that's a short synopsis. I hope I didn't ramble on it. Do you have any questions?
I think an important thing to note, too, is that the three offenses have to come within the same year.
Exactly.
And that if tenants should move out in the middle of the year and new tenants move in, then the slate goes back to zero complaints against that residence because I think that's an important piece as well.
Mr. Schaefer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was hoping that the captain or Ms. Linowski would talk about other communities that have enacted similar bylaws or ordinances and what the result has been.
Actually, our neighboring community, Hadley, just recently passed this bylaw. They were on the committee. We did our research with towns in near Ganso, Rhode Island, San Diego, California. They had, we probably took the most info from what they used and kind of pieced it together in our thing. And they've had great success. And again, using it as a civil infraction where you're writing a ticket, not in a custodial-type situation. And I think it's important, the town of Hadley, to their credit, has passed bylaws the last couple of years mirroring Amherst. So we're sending out a consistent message to the students. And again, like anything, 98% of the kids, it's a 2% that caused the problems, but I think it's important to send consistent messages. Sally, that's more in your court.
Yeah. One of the other communities that's similar to Amherst is Washington State University. They also have a social host ordinance. And what they've found is, like any other campuses, you start to tighten up your policy and enforcement on the campus, a concern in a local community always is, are you driving the problems off-campus? And it's really important to be addressing it at both sides. And what's nice about this proposal and this bylaw is that the university has tightened its sanctions in holding students accountable. Hadley has jumped on board. And that for Amherst, they're really the threats to public health and safety that can be caused by just a few large disturbances are real. And so the attempt is to minimize the impact of disruptive events on the local community and to send a consistent message to students, whether they're on-campus or off-campus, they're part of our community and there are expectations for their behavior.
Senator?
I was just wondering, in the copy I have, I don't see the amount of the fines specified. And I wondered about that because some other bylaws do have that.
I guess it's a procedural thing, Mr. Schaefer. But we are hoping the committee to go straight to the maximum fine you can allow is $300 by state law. And we are hoping that it'll just be a set $300, no tiered step. In this day and age, $100 really doesn't have much impact on people. So we are hoping that the fine will be a straight $300.
Shouldn't that be in there, Bill?
I believe there's a motion to be filed.
I can explain that if you want. When the warrant was actually created and before it was approved by town council, the fines hadn't been implemented yet. So what happened was they went and they put it in the script as a certain amount. And actually, that was altered today. I spoke with both Harrison and Joel, who both approved the language for the $300 fine.
So it should be handled as an amendment?
Yes.
It says, shall be enforced by criminal complaint in district court.
Yeah. We originally did not have that in there. And town council suggested that we would put that in there for the simple reason, if it was a more serious, let's say it dovetailed something else that developed into a more serious situation, trying to think of an example, where the more serious situation, the person was getting charged in criminal court, then you would put, you could put this on, the town council suggested to put this on with the charges going over to criminal court. So it would only be in very, very rare circumstances. Our whole focus is, we didn't have that in there to begin with. It was on advice of the town council.
I'm just, I was kind of concerned about the language. It says, shall be enforced by criminal complaint in district court. It shall make it?
I recall in the Hadley town meeting that that was, the same language was used and that someone had asked that question. And there's some legal interpretation of what shall means that doesn't necessarily preclude you from doing the civil infraction.
Shall might mean may?
Yes. I think that was in a nutshell what they were saying.
So we have, I mean, our primary goal is that this will be an immediate impact on scene, non-criminal bylaw.
And particularly for today's young people, millennial students, as we call them, they really respond best to swift and immediate consequences. And we found at the university, we've increased our judicial fines for alcohol policy violations to $100 for first offense, $175 for second offense. And it has had a deterrent effect. So.
And actually, if I think deeper into that, that's no different than our keg bylaw, which we write tickets for, but the wording is the same in that where there is an avenue for criminal complaint. I'll give you a perfect example. A cop goes for a noise disturbance and makes a custody for a noise violation, the town bylaw, and finds a keg in there, in the house. So now you have violation of town bylaw, noise, which is an arrestable offense in violation of a keg bylaw. They just dovetail them together and send the case over together. Whereas if they found a keg, if the keg was found alone, then it would just be a civil matter of writing a ticket.
Okay.
So this is primarily about creating fines. Is that correct? Like I was reading this thinking, all of these things are already against the law. Nothing new is against the law. Is that true?
No, actually, there is. And a perfect example, again, if you go to the definition of public nuisance, obstruction, an example, obstruction of public streets by crowds. Well, quite often, we'll get dispatched to 2:00 in the morning, a side street, noise disturbance. The officers will get there and there'll be 100 kids in the street. Well, the party's let out. The house is quiet. But our hands are tied. You know, okay, guys, start heading home. There's nothing we can, consequent, we can give to the person throwing the party. Now, he threw the party. He's also responsible for his guests leaving in a quiet manner. This will give us, we can go to the house and say, you know what? This is public nuisance here. So that's just one example. So there are specifics. And quite frankly, that's something that's tied our hands. And there's a few ones that could come up on the top of my head we deal with regularly in that type of situation. So that's just an example.
And I think the civil nature also, the ability to immediately take it immediately is something different. It isn't as if these things aren't crimes in and of themselves, but the ability for the police officer to be able to respond quickly in an appropriate fashion. This is all about changing behavior. It's not about raising fines. It's not about revenues. It's about changing behavior and giving police officers the tool to put into place a system to change that behavior as quickly as possible. So we know what we have now. And what we're saying is that this committee, Captain Kent, are looking at tools that we can give to our police officers that will allow them to change what we've got out there, change behavior.
Was there a public hearing on this?
Public hearing? No, I don't believe so.
So there hasn't necessarily been?
No. And let me say this, actually, and another avenue, the public hearing brought to my, we tried to get someone from the UMass student body on our committee. They never showed up. We reached numerous times, emails, I'll be there. We wanted input from that segment, but we were unable to get it.
So is that sort of unusual? Don't our bylaw changes, I don't actually know how these things work, but just thinking about kind of the zoning bylaw changes and things like that, there's kind of a public hearing process that things go through to make sure kind of all concerned parties? Just reading this, I was thinking about landlords. You said you had a landlord. I don't know if that person represents all landlords, but are like apartment management complexes and apartments.
Yeah. Steve Walzak is the head of the landlord association in town. Matter of fact, I had a conversation with him this morning. He's kept them appraised every step of the way, with emails. That being said, he's gotten phone calls saying, what the heck are you trying to push through here? And once he explains it to them, you know, at least he's telling me they're happy with it. Okay, I understand it now. Again, very reasonable. If you're a good landlord, I don't think we're asking you to do anything that you wouldn't be doing regardless of this.
And at our larger campus community coalition, we have sort of a larger group that's a steering committee. We did have students on that. And when the group took a motion to vote in support, it was unanimous and there were students there. And the other piece we know with our student data is they actually want stricter enforcement and they want people to be held accountable, particularly for repeat alcohol violations and anything that results in violence or fights or assaults.
I mean, I was a young cop in '86 when they passed a noise bylaw, a keg bylaw, the open container. And that was a huge tool as a young officer. I think this can be the same thing for the young officers now dealing with it. I'm not going to be the one out dealing with it, but I think this is going to help them.
Will this apply to fraternities and sororities on town property?
Yeah.
Yes.
Everything on town property.
So in those cases, is the person responsible, the fraternity chapter or who?
Whoever, this goes back to whoever the tax records indicate owns the property will be the one getting the notices. We already notify the landlords of any noise disturbances. They get a slip of paper in the mail, we were at your apartment, even if we don't take action, just to make them aware of it. But this, and that's how we use it, the taxpayer gets it. So this will be the same thing. So yes, fraternity house, whoever's paying the taxes on it, who's ever collecting the rent is going to be the one that's going to be dealing with it.
They're the ones who will be approached.
Exactly.
Two more questions, sorry. And then I'm done. I'll be quick. The first one is, I live on Butterfield Terrace, which is full student rentals and a dorm, so I'm very familiar with the kinds of issues. And one of the things I'm familiar with is that oftentimes, some of the residents change. They don't change en masse. So I was looking at 6A, talking about, one-year time period violations for property shall pertain only to the same residents occupying the property who have had prior violations. Sometimes there's a holdover from one semester to the next of half the people or one of the people, and that could go on kind of for years and stuff. How does, how do you deal with that?
Well, I mean, the law is going to allow us to issue a ticket. I guess it's all, the good tenants are going to have to convince the bad ones to move in, hey, you're toeing the line, you're a new person. I think there's got to be some accountability on the side of the renters also here, even the good ones.
So you could have people who are at the same, for the same violation, one person's maybe getting a third and one person's getting a second offense or something. If you're talking about the people renting?
Yeah, I guess theoretically, you're right.
And my other question is number seven. Can't help but ask. The Board of Selectmen is hereby authorized to promulgate regulations to implement this bylaw. What does that mean?
Anybody know? I'm sure that was crafted for the town of Hadley. Regulations for the enforcement of this bylaw should come out of the executive office and I would assign it to the police department anyway. The Board of Selectmen in Amherst, they're not a regulatory body. They don't promulgate regulations and they don't enforce regulations. They're not a regulatory body. That's going to have to be amended.
Yeah. We try to keep them out of harm's way. You say it was a good question. I'm always on the other side. Here's a new law, read it, go out and enforce it. You know, so being on the side of it's a little different.
One of the things we talked about associated with the right to file a bylaw was the fact that all the real estate agents in town would basically get some language from us once that gets passed that says, this is a town where we have a right to file a bylaw. That means that it could be smelly, noisy, blah, 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 so don't complain if you complain. With this, I realize there is the landlord organization, but how do we make sure that, given that we don't have exactly the kind of rental registration they have in some places, that you've got, obviously, the organized places and the Steve Walzak place, it's going to be fine, but the little onesie-twosie places are going to realize, oh, I really do have to do this and don't get surprised by it. How do you fold everybody in when there's such a range of people?
Well, I think, hopefully, when this passes, you'll see, we'll notify the landlord on each offense with a form, with a letter, with a form. So I'm hoping we can word something in there so they get the first one in the mail, something that's going to jump out at them and say, boy, this is a serious thing. I'd better get on it right now. So.
Okay. I think I'm looking before that. I'm looking for the next set of leases that are signed. So the next set of, before, because of course, no one's going to get in trouble for this. This will go into effect after the agent approves it. So theoretically, sometimes. So that will be before or after some of the leases that are signed. And so how do we make sure that everybody's got that information moving forward so that some tenants are facing one kind of situation and some others?
I understand exactly what you're saying, no. I guess we would have to, and we have a meeting with the committee tomorrow, as a matter of fact. I guess we would have to come up with a campaign, just get the word out there. I don't know what the exact avenue would be, but that's a very relevant point. And I think UMass would do the same with the student body.
Yeah. The university, we have the off-campus housing office, so we can communicate with students that way. We already do about the existing town bylaws. We've taken a real proactive stance in sort of educating students. We also do things like rental fares and that sort of thing. So making students aware of not only what services are available in the town of Amherst, but what the local bylaws are that they need to make sure that they're following. And so we'll take an active stance there to make sure that students are informed. So we put things on the buses and in the residence halls and we have a pretty good success rate of reaching students with our messages.
So the only power this gives you with the multiple repeat offenders is continuing $300 fine.
And cost recovery, if it's a major incident. I mean, if it's a smaller one, my guess is it would be more bother than it's worth, but I mean, if it's a major disturbance.
I mean, just nuisance, continual.
Well, I would think, yeah, I would think after.
Not rioting parties, but just thinking of one particular off-campus.
I know what you're thinking.
Facility town that has repeated violations of noise and lights and.
And that's the first thing, one of the first places that jumped out at me when I was reading the definitions of a public nuisance because it covers just about all of them. So in a case like that, in a house like that with what you're dealing with, is it going to, I don't know. But I think you send a message, $300 at a time, hopefully it would help.
Yeah.
Okay. I know the neighbors are going to ask questions of this particular facility. Yes. Assuming like speeding, there's no prohibition against issuing one ticket a day or two tickets in a day per violation. So if you show up at 6:00 in the afternoon and issue a citation, and you need to come back at 10:00, you can issue a citation.
Exactly. And this is also, we agreed with DeFunt, takes into account litter, all the problems we have with.
Right.
Urination and.
I keep asking questions. I'm sorry. Thinking about this speeding analogy, people talk about enforcement issues sometimes are a product of how long it takes to write a ticket, process a ticket, so you're sort of cutting the losses or whatever and maybe issuing fewer tickets. Administratively, is this going to tie you up on scene? Is that going to?
No. I think it'll be, it'll be a fairly quick process. We have town bylaw tickets that we use now for other things. It's just a matter of filling it out. And at a later time, the officer goes in and enters it into the system. So I don't believe it'd be, because the officer, for the most part, is going to be there anyway. The only difference is this is giving them a tool to hopefully end it on one visit. So I don't think administratively, it'll really amount to anything.
And conversely, we're hoping that it drops the number of calls down. And if it does indeed, if it's effective, then it should change behavior, which ultimately will reduce our calls. So Thursday, Friday, or Saturday night, you'll have 250 calls for service, 200 calls for service, extraordinary number of calls. And you can't handle 250 calls and we don't have enough money in our treasury to put on the offices necessary to handle 250 calls appropriately. So the hope is, is to take that 250 calls and reduce them to zero. But maybe if it reduces them to 120, then all of a sudden, now we're in a much better situation to focus on our real problems. So what we're trying to do is kind of compress our problem by taking this action. And once we compress it and isolate it, then we can really hit the problem, the real problem spot. So. Okay. I'm assuming that this is, okay, I was just going to say that I think this is, it has to be a select board motion. Am I correct?
So I guess, I'm sorry, the final thing I want to say is, do you have discretion in doing this? I'm concerned about the people who, you know, what I always say is, you don't move next to the train station and then complain about the trains. So personally, I have a very high tolerance for this kind of thing. I lived next to the university. I knew what I was getting into. I don't want the kids who happen to live next to someone very cranky to really be getting squeezed by this.
And that happens. And the officers have discretion on every call they go to. It will continue with this. You know, an example is the neighbor, Monday night, kids are watching football, yelling and screaming on a big play. The police get called. Of course, they're not going to, so absolutely, the officers, they have the ultimate discretion on the street.
I just wanted to comment that one of the reasons I didn't have all those questions is I had an earlier conversation with Steve Walzak. And so it's perfectly reasonable that you have all these questions. I wanted to mention, if we hadn't already, that, because I appreciate that it's listed in here, that the owner of the property is not held responsible for any violation and penalties if they're actively trying to evict a tenant. Because I've heard that side of it, too. And I know that that's a very long, cumbersome process in Massachusetts. So I'm glad. But it does also kind of encourage people to go ahead and go through the pain of eviction in order to move on.
Will that be some kind of tracking system so that if landlords and ladies, when people are applying to live in their facilities, can they check with the police to get names? I mean, you're issuing citations, there would be names on them, right?
There's certain Corey criminal offender record now, whether, because it's a non-criminal ticket, whether that follows under or not, I don't know. My guess would be no, but I'd have to read the law closer and probably have to call the Corey Board to find out. The university does have a clearinghouse.
Yeah. A discipline check that we'll do for, records check that we'll do for landlords, a student landlords. A student has to consent to have their judicial record reviewed and they'll share whether the person has any offenses.
Right. Because if I, if I was a landlord, I, somebody applied to live in my apartment and they had 22 violations, I'd want to know that.
So following up on that, Dan, I can see, and I'm sorry, I was just not being that familiar with that system. So I can see where on-campus housing, you know, where you have a, an issue with an individual and then they have a record. And so then, when that person goes to move off-campus, the landlord can call and say, has this person been a problem? And you can say, well, yes, in fact, they have.
Yeah, the student has to consent. The student has to sign a written consent that they'll allow the landlord to look at that record. If they don't sign that consent, then the landlord has their own discretion whether to rent to that person or not. But it, it's sort of a piece for students, it's a reward to live off-campus. And so we don't want to be in a position where we're kicking people out of housing to then create problems in the communities. And so it's, it's sort of the carrot versus the stick approach. It's keep your judicial record clean and then you can go and live in one of the, you know, one of the nice apartments in town.
And then the follow-up to that, though, is that, say they have a clean record, they move off-campus, they have issues, you're not going to know about that.
Occasionally, we do. The, the police department does notify the dean of students' office about arrests and things like that. So, and they are held accountable for what behavior they have off-campus.
As something that would be reported, because I think that's an important part of the plan.
I believe that they would. I think they'd have to check with Joanne Vine on that, but certainly a nuisance house would be, would be brought to the attention of the university if it's university students that are rented there. Or in the, you know, in the case of a chapter house, for example.
Yeah.
Um, it gives, it gives additional teeth for enforcement for taking action.
Are we ready?
We're going to do a motion?
I think we need a motion.
So it's free to have the actual language, but we'll listen closely now to this and what we've described.
So the, the motion has been changed?
Um, the only thing that's different is that the amounts all say $300.
Ah, okay.
The wording is the same.
The wording's the same.
And the part about the regulations.
And the regulatory process is pushed.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I see. Ask.
So we take that as section seven. So I move to recommend article 40, as printed in the warrant, with the exception of section seven being removed and under section eight enforcement, all three, um, listings there that have blanks next to them right now would have 300 next to them. Yeah. Steph?
Just have a question.
Yeah.
Is that true or did you talk about 100, 175?
No, we want, we would like to go straight to 300.
First, second, and third.
Yeah, just a set $300 fine.
Wanted to be sure.
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else? Who will vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Four to zero, one absent. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody in town meeting?
Yep.
Who wants this one?
Sure.
Sure, sure takes it.
Okay.
A slight nod.
You're back in the video?
This will get it.
Yeah.
I feel like I attacked it, so yeah.
It's not going to happen tonight.
No, it's not going to happen tonight.
Yeah, make it all up tonight.
Okay, moving right along. We have an easement, article 41.